Hey, good afternoon, everyone. And thank you for being here. It's Wednesday, December 12th, 2018. This is the Finance and Neighborhood Committee. And this is our last committee meeting for 2018. And I want to say thank you so much to our new Youth Commission members who will be coming up. I'm very grateful that all of you are interested in participating in this, but also congratulations for being selected. Council President Harrell is usually really tough at these things, so I just want you to buckle your seatbelt and be ready for a lot of questions. So, I think I just have a very short chair's report today. We have three landmark designations: the Japanese Language School, the University of Washington Canoe House, and the Edris Nurses House on Queen Anne. We are going to have a technical change amendment to the Seattle Animal Shelter, which is really just a cleanup from the budget a couple of weeks ago. And we are going to have a very short public hearing that we will open, allow for public hearing, to talk about community development block grants. And then we're going to discuss on vote on the fourth quarter employment ordinance, as well as the fourth quarter supplemental budget and grants acceptance ordinances. I know that that sounds really exciting to all of you. It is the Finance Committee after all, and this is our last meeting. We're doing a bunch of cleanups, so thank you for that. And at this time, I'm going to open for any public comment? If anybody has signed up for public comment? Did we get the sheet?
None.
Nothing? Any of the parents? Any of you want to join us for public comment? Okay, if not, then I'm going to move right along. And Dan, ask you, Dan Strauss, thank you for my office, if you will call up each of the nominees for our Youth Commission. And then I'm going to ask all of you to come up simultaneously, find a place, and then we will let the hazing begin. So will you please read these all in? And Leslie, thank you, please. Yeah, have them all come up.
Yes. Agenda item 1 through 10, appointments 1201 through 1208, and appointments 1115 and 1116. The appointments of Abdouali Ali, Wan Gikou Hops, Jordan Howard, as members of the Seattle Youth Commission for terms to August 31st, 2019. And the appointments of Rosie Allen, Henry Irving Engel, Madison Jackson Height, Catherine Kang, Linda Fawn, Gian Rosario, excuse me, and Chloe Rubin, as members of the Seattle Youth Commission for terms to August 31st, 2020.
Excellent, thank you. Well, so I appreciate all of you coming. And what I'd like to do, Leslie, if you would like to introduce your students and tell us why this is so important, we know how important it is, and then Council President Harrell and I will ask questions.
I'm very excited to introduce the 2018, 2019 onboarding Youth Commissioners. This group is particularly special because they represent so many different issues that was voiced in their applications, which really kind of filled in some gaps for the Commission from last year. Do you want introductions of each one's names?
Well, I think maybe we can let them do that.
Thank you.
But if you have any overviews, and then I'm going to, in fact, sometimes we do a bishop's move, so you should be aware that it may not be going down the row.
Yeah. Okay, great. I do want to say that Abdouali Ali is not here today, and I don't know if he'll be coming in later, but he's absent from the table. But just kind of a quick overview of maybe kind of what they've kind of started working on already. This group has already begun to take on some leadership development trainings, RSJI training, boards and commissions training. Currently, they're doing strategic planning workshop, and then later they'll be working on communication strategies, how to talk about the Youth Commission and connect them to their constituents. Yeah, so they're very proud to be doing that work and voting on priorities that they care about.
Okay, very nice. All right, well, let's just start. Why don't you get started? Introduce yourself. And then what I'm interested in is, what are you interested in, and why did you want to be on the Commission?
My name is Jordan Howard, and I wanted to be in the Commission because I was really interested in homelessness and like just having a kid's perspective on what should be changed in Seattle. And I thought like a kid's voice should be heard, and I thought it was really like an interesting thing to do.
Excellent, Jordan. Thank you. What's school do you attend?
Seattle Academy.
All right, very good. Thank you. Henry?
My name's Henry Engel.
Henry, excuse me, move this closer to you.
My name's Henry Engel. I go to Denny International Middle School, and I joined the Youth Commission to help homeless youth get better transportation to school.
Great, thank you. And what brought you to this Youth Commission with all the things that you could be doing with your time?
Well, my teacher, Mr. Will Siegel, was a big influential part of me becoming a youth advocate, and he showed me that being a youth advocate is very important.
Great, thank you. Well, thank you for listening to your teacher, and would you express my thanks that he invited you to apply? Thank you. Let's come over here.
My name is Madison Jackson Height. I go to Ballard High School. And I joined the Youth Commission because I think it's really important for youth to have voices in Seattle, and I thought it would be an amazing opportunity to be part of that voice. And some issues that I'm really interested in are female rights, so youth women's rights and adults, and more opportunities in the workplace, as well as homelessness in Seattle. I think it's a big issue, and I would love to do something to fix that.
Great. And do you have any thoughts particularly about how you want to fix it?
I think setting up programs for homelessness or homeless people to go to, to help get them a place to live or food to eat, shelter, and also programs for women to be a part of that will help give them confidence to express their voice in the community.
Great, Madison, thank you. Thank you for that. And I really am going to invite all of you, be sure you know you can just contact my office. One of the things we'd like to be able to offer you is a base of what's going on right now, what services are available, who's offering it, whether it's through the city or the county or various nonprofits, because then you've got a platform from which you can grow and not have to reinvent things that may already be done. Good, welcome, please.
My name is Linda Fan, and I'm a junior at Garfield High School. The reason why I really wanted to become part of the Commission was to have an opportunity and a platform to amplify marginalized voices here in Seattle, specifically pertaining to Seattle youth. One of the main issues that I advocate for is the wealth disparity between Seattle Public Schools in both the north and southern parts of Seattle, and how we can work to alleviate those disparities and provide the same opportunities for students who go to those different schools.
Very good, thank you very much. And if you could accomplish one thing this year, and focusing on what you just expressed, what would that be?
One of the main issues I find within the Seattle Public School system is the distribution of funds that we give, specifically that northern schools usually have more funds, therefore are able to fund more resources and more opportunities for those students. So I want to work toward a way to find a way to get those funds to be evenly or more distributed to schools who don't have those same opportunities.
Well done, and very well spoken. Thank you. All right, moving down here.
Hi, sorry, what was the question?
The question is, what brought you to wanting to serve on this Commission, and what are you specifically interested in doing?
So one of the things that brought me to this Commission was particularly the voices that we were, that I felt like the Council.
Excuse me, can you give us your name, and then move this closer to you because you're soft spoken?
So my name is Gian Nicola Rosario, and I graduated from Rainier Beach High School. And one of the things that I particularly talked about when signing up for the Seattle Youth Commission was bringing voices for this that were, that I felt like were lacking in City Hall, particularly voices from Rainier Beach High School, students from Rainier Beach High School. And one of the issues that I felt that I wanted to bring up was ethnic studies, and how important it was for students to learn about different, ethnic studies. And, well, something that Linda has already touched on was the distribution of resources within Seattle Public Schools.
So you said you've graduated?
Yes.
And what are you doing now?
I'm currently attending the University of Washington.
Okay.
Yes, I'm kind of studying public policy and governance and diversity and equity in education.
Very good. Did you do running start or how?
I was part of the international baccalaureate program at Rainier Beach High School.
Lovely.
Yeah.
Thanks, very good. Okay, well, let's jump back over on this side.
Hi, my name's Chloe Rubin, and I'm a junior at Seattle Academy. I think the main reason why I was super interested in being on the Youth Commission was because I've always been interested in the idea of youth advocacy and youth having a voice in Seattle on a variety of issues. And so I felt that this would be a really awesome opportunity to learn more about that process as a youth and as I can use the same process as I get older. And I think, I just think it's a really important skill to know how to actually get things done, not just be able to spread awareness about them, I guess. And some issues I'm really interested in are issues on gun violence and disability rights.
Well done, and you and I share that, so both those things. So thank you very much, Chloe, for participating in this. All right, back on this side.
My name's Rosie Allen, and I go to Roosevelt High School, and I'm a sophomore. And one of the reasons I decided to join the Youth Council was because I think that as a youth, our opinions really matter because we are the future. And I think that what we see within our schools and our communities and within our peers is super important because I went from a school more south, and now I go to a school more north, and to see that drastic change is like something that's really important to me. So that's back to like the resources for schools up north and down south. And I think, and that's one of the things that I advocate for because I've seen those differences, and I like had to go through those during middle school, and now I'm in high school out of north school. And it's just something that's super important to me, and I hope to accomplish, to like make a change within that and make sure that everyone within the Seattle Public Schools and other schools have a fair share of opportunities.
Well said, thank you very much. What was your middle school?
I went to Washington.
Okay, all right. Just out of curiosity, how many of you play an instrument or sing or? Nice. Did you participate at Washington and now at Roosevelt?
Well, now I'm in the theater department at Roosevelt, but at Washington, the whole time I was there, I played violin.
Oh, nice, very good, excellent. Okay, and I do want to say thank you and hello to Councilmember Deborah Juarez, who is watching as we speak. So go ahead, please.
Hi, I'm Wan Gikou Hops. I'm currently a junior at Seattle Prep High School. One of the reasons why I joined the Seattle Youth Commission is because I found it as an opportunity not only to put my voice and my opinions out there, but an opportunity to learn from my fellow commissioners and hear their beliefs and opinions, and learn from them, and also learn in the realm of political science and work with people who are currently working in that field.
Great. And do you have plans?
I'm really passionate on the topics of inclusion of special needs students in the Seattle youth area. And I'm also very passionate about social justice issues and diversity in both high-end jobs and also just around youth and getting their word out there.
Well done, well spoken. Please.
Hello, good afternoon. I'm Abdouali Abdi, and I graduated from Franklin High School last year, so I've joined Seattle Central this quarter, so I'm starting like my first year in college. And the reason why I joined the Seattle Youth Commission, I think because I faced a lot of, you know, different things when I was back home Africa. And then since I came like a new country, I wanted to say my fellow, you know, fellow youths to see like their opinions and share their opinions, and then they see what I have and what they have if I compare them. And the issue I have is that there is immigrants, the immigrant students, the immigrant parents. So I was one of the immigrants that who joined this country, and then when they go to high school or maybe middle school or university, they really get a lot of difficulties and a lot of problems. And they get treated like as same as the people who have been born here, where they are different, and then they don't understand each other, and then the teachers kind of like, you know, they don't give that much attention, well, they have to get more attention. And there are some really good, they're kind of like, they can be same as the people who were born here, and when they come here, they're kind of like not treated as, they believe that they are not good as the other ones. So I would really, that is my passion about the immigrants.
Thank you so much for bringing your skills and personal experiences to this. It's extremely important and a concern that all of us share, so it's great. Now, last.
Hi, my name is Catherine. I am an eighth grader at University Prep, and I decided to join the Seattle Youth Commission because I'm very engaged in my community, but I wanted to take it a step further, and I wanted to make sure that I was at the table instead of on the menu.
I love that expression.
And I think as a female youth of color, my ideas and my input is really important, and I really wanted to hear what other people wanted to say as well.
Well done. All of you just touched me so much, your interest and energy and obvious focus on things that matter for our city. And I can almost not overstate how important your voices are. And this is something I believe personally, and I've really walked this talk, when my sons were in high school and junior high, we promoted this, and I'm talking, you know, almost dark ages ago now, but 20 years ago, that having students in, working with teachers and principals on a peer basis was almost unheard of. So we've started this, and I've seen firsthand how important what you have to say is. So I would just again encourage you, as you're working together, if there are issues or ideas that you have that you want me to know about, or Council President Harrell to contact my office, Leslie, you can help coordinate that. We would be happy to come and talk to you further. And I also just want you to know that when opportunities arise, and they arrive frequently, when something is going on and people say, well, we'd like to include youth voices in this, my first stop is the Youth Commission. So you may find yourself invited to things that you don't even expect. Council President Harrell, why don't you take us home with you?
No, I'm just joking. I was thinking serious. First of all, in all seriousness, thank all of you for serving. I had read your backgrounds before the meeting, and I just see so much potential in all of you with your own voices. You all are growing up in a different Seattle than I grew up in. I was born here, and I attended Garfield High School, like Linda. Washington was not Washington when I was a kid, it was Garfield as well. It was another campus of Garfield. And I went to TT Minor, that's no longer there per se, but I only say that to say that this issue of homelessness, as an example, that came up in a few of your talks, it wasn't like that when I was a child. There weren't hundreds, if not thousands, of people living in cars or under bridges. And I think a few of you talked about the disparity in income in a city or state where we have one, two, three of the richest people in the world, and we see that. So there's sort of two schools of thoughts, and I'm gonna, I'm really exaggerating when I say two schools of thoughts, probably 2,000 schools of thought. And one school of thought is that that's a great thing, that we have so much wealth around here, it's opportunity for people, it's jobs, it's people that come from underrepresented groups that could live a path of, to that kind of success, and go out there and get it, and if you don't, that's sort of up to you. And those that fall between the cracks, well, they just didn't see the opportunity. And there's another school of thought that would suggest that from a human rights perspective, that everyone has a right to be warm and to be fed, and that everyone has to step up, and that our city, we have to invest and make sure everyone has a warm place to live. So when you see people living under the bridges, and you see them, right? You see them, you see the tents along the streets. Can some of you share, what's your gut, and what are you hearing from other people that are saying, well, they need to, they need to go somewhere else? I mean, what are people saying in your age group? Because I get it from all angles as well, but I don't know what the, you're not even the millennials, right? I don't know what you guys, what are they, the?
Gen Z.
The what?
Gen Z.
The Gen Z, yeah, I've heard that one, the Gen Z. So what are the Gen Z'ers saying when, other than, we're not doing a good job, we hear that as city leaders, what are they saying when they walk past that? No right or wrong answers, we're just sharing. And if you don't answer the question, I'm not going to vote for you. No, I'm just joking.
I told you he was tough.
All right, show me some leadership. Who wants to go first?
I think, at least along the peers that I talk to, the first thing that comes to mind is the shock, that we're living in a society where it's the norm to see people on the street, living on the street. And not only the shock, but kind of for me and a lot of my friends, it's, this isn't right. They face the shock of like that it's the norm, but it's also this isn't right as like a humanity issue. Like you stated before, I believe that all people deserve the right, it's a human right to be able to be, have protection, safety, the right of like a house.
This is Chloe, right?
No, Chloe's not. I'm Wan Gikou.
Wan Gikou?
Wan Gikou.
For Seattle Prep?
Yeah.
Got it. And whose fault is it, though? Who are they saying, is there fault that people are saying it's?
Well, I believe that it's everyone as a society, it's not on just the people who are homeless, and it's not on just the people who are working in government. I think we all need to change our perspective and realize that it's an issue that needs to be dealt with, and we need to turn the stereotype from we, I mean, from them versus us to it's a we issue, we're all in this together kind of thing.
I'm liking you.
Any other thoughts people would like to share? Aren't there some people that are saying bad things about those living under tents? I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but if we're gonna keep it real, as my kids say, let's keep it real, what else are they saying? What kind of commissions you bringing us here? They're not saying anything, Leslie, I want my money back. Speak up. Jordan, right?
Yeah.
I know you have a strong opinion, you're from Chicago, right?
Mm-hmm.
I do my research.
I was just like thinking that a lot of people want to kick them off the streets, but it's actually not that hard if you put them in, if you go in their shoes, it's really not that hard. Like, it's really hard to grow up from that. They're probably not born, they're probably born from like maybe in poverty, and if they live like that, it's not always easy to just be, get rich or something like that. And from a Chicago's perspective, it's like, in Chicago, there's homelessness, but it's not, like they have homeless shelters and everything, but in Seattle, it's a lot worse. I see tents all lined up where I live in Rainier, it's actually crazy. I was...
Go ahead.
Oh, I'm good.
No, I was gonna say, and I live on, that's my district, and I get it from both sides, that people are saying, it is crazy, do something about it. And I'll ask them, what would you like me to do? I don't have, it's hard enough for a barista or a teacher to live in Seattle, nonetheless, finding real estate for everyone to live. And sometimes that's not a choice, sometimes it's the best we can do, but people, I don't want to see that every day, and the face of poverty is not pretty to look at sometimes, but do something about it, and they'll blame me. And I always ask them, well, what would you like us to do? Want us to put them all in jail? Is, are you criminalizing poverty at that point? But I think what your point is, is you have to go beyond who you see and understand why that person is there, sort of what I'm hearing from you.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Any other thoughts you'd like to share?
I'm just gonna add on, I think it's really hard for not just youth, but people in Seattle to believe that Seattle really is one of the highest, if not the highest, cities in the US with like the highest homelessness rate per capita. So I think it's really important to address that and realize how drastic the problem really is here in Seattle. I also really think that one of, like Jordan was saying, it's really easy for people to isolate, and Wan Gikou was saying, it's really hard, it's really easy to isolate the issue from oneself and believe that homeless, those who are homeless are the reason why they're homeless, and it's really easy to put the blame on them, instead of understanding as a society, we need to take the problem onto ourselves and understand that sometimes people need help, and it happens, and we need to be there to uplift each other as a society and support those who are homeless.
Very good.
Yeah, very nice. So do you get the opportunity to go to the legislature? Do you go as a group? Okay, well, if you do, or if you get down there individually, or you're talking to your local legislators, be sure to let them know that you're on the Youth Commission, and also let them know how much these issues matter to you. And we're working hard on a regional approach to help this, the housing problem, but we know we need literally hundreds of thousands of more units in Seattle, King County, Snohomish, Pierce, and Kitsap. So as we're talking with our legislators, we say, well, Seattle's doing a lot, you know, our taxpayers are stepping up, our taxpayers are being generous, but we need to have others in King County and the other counties to do that, carry their fair share, and we need the state to invest. And there's something called the Housing Trust Fund, and just let them know that you think they ought to put many hundreds of millions of dollars in that Housing Trust Fund. Okay.
I had one other area that I want to ask you about, and, by the way, I really look forward to you inviting me to speak with you at one of your meetings. My middle son is actually a commissioner too, and we had a lot of fun with that, and he's, like many of you, very opinionated on certain things.
When we already get that person.
Yeah. I actually took notes on sort of what you were interested in, and I understand there were more things you could have said, but not one of you said something that sort of interests me, and that is where we are with the state of race relations. You might have recently heard about what happened just in Linwood, just our neighboring city to the north, where an African-American DJ and I think a person of Filipino descent was, is an owner, and there were, a supremacist group went in there, and they're like, I think eight or nine people arrested. You probably follow this issue, and they were, these were hate crimes, no doubt, just based on the color of someone's skin. Now, I'm very pleased to see we have such a diverse group of young folks here. You're not diverse, and you're all younger than me, but you're diverse in other ways. But not one of you said the issue of race relations, or I think someone mentioned the word inclusion, I think, Wan Gikou, I think, am I saying your name right?
Wan Gikou.
Wan Gika?
Wan Gikou.
Wan Gikou. Wan Gikou said the word of inclusion, which could mean inclusive of everyone around, but I guess we're just beyond this race thing now, right? That everyone just gets along and looks, well, that's, well, anyway, I'm hoping that it's with, with our current federal administration, in particular our executive, and where the federal talks are, and I don't know if you follow the Brett Kavanaugh, the Supreme Court Justice confirmation process, but just in terms of either gender exploitation or gender unfairness and race unfairness, again, you're living in a different, with different things are happening. I would argue that it's not different, that it's just being surfaced again, that some of this, the stuff has always been there. But I'm hopeful that you all just don't assume everyone is, that we have this problem of racism and prejudice amongst even your peer group completely licked, and it's over with. And I'm hoping that you all could think creatively, because quite frankly, you're the best of the best here. You guys are the cream of the crop, leaders in your respective schools, both independent schools and Seattle Public Schools, that I'm hoping you all could help us figure out even how we can go out to Linwood and meet with some of those students and make sure that we, we are strong and united against that kind of bigotry, because it's still very real. But I didn't hear any of you mention bigotry in some of the things that interest you. But it interests me, and so we could talk more about that.
I can talk really quick just about that.
Garfield, I love you two all, you had me at hello.
The reason why I think that we didn't, not one of us particularly addressed race directly is because I believe that race and just bigotry in general is intertwined in all of the issues we talked about. Race is an institution that is prevalent in every single thing within our society, so all of our issues do have race intertwined with them, and have, the reason why a lot of the disparities happen is connected to things like race or gender or other types of identity. So yeah, I'm gonna step back and let the other commissioners talk, but I think that's why we did not directly label race.
Sure, sure.
I think to add on to that really fast, we also, as a Youth Commission, are going to be splitting up into three different committees, and one of those is an RSJI committee. And so we're going to be looking at every issue that we're going to be dealing with from a race and social justice perspective. And so I think, in that regard, I think we all recognize that race plays a part, like Linda said, in everything that goes on. And unfortunately, racism is just completely prevalent in our society, and we have to address that in every issue that we're going to have to deal with.
Very good, excellent.
Yeah, very touching, thank you. I want to say thank you to the parents and the teachers and sponsors who are out here. You undoubtedly are just as proud as you can possibly be of these students, and I just want to say thank you. You've obviously done well by them and for them, so congratulations. So you've read this into the record. Council President Harrell, if you don't have any further comments, I'm going to move the appointments from appointment 01201 through appointment number 01203.
I will second it.
Okay, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And no abstentions? Unanimously, thank you all, and I look forward to working with you and seeing you in an upcoming meeting. meeting. Good, Leslie, thank you if you'll leave them out and thank you all for coming again.
Thank you.
Dan, do you want to read in item number 11?
Yes. Council Bill 119418, short title and ordinance relating to historic preservation and imposing controls on the Japanese language school, a landmark designated by the Landmarks Preservation Board.
Thank you. Okay, do we have our landmark preservation board friends here? So I'll ask you to come up.
Nice. Can you have the seat in control about that?
Either seat is fine. Nope, absolutely. I'm just going to do this so I can draw.
Erin, would you like to introduce yourself and introduce your guests?
Yes, thank you. Erin Doherty, Seattle Department of Neighborhoods, Landmarks Preservation Board.
Thank you.
Karen Yoshitomi, I'm the Executive Director of the Japanese Cultural and Community Center of Washington.
Welcome, Karen.
Thank you.
Julie Blakesley, the University of Washington Environmental and Land use Planner.
Thank you, Julie.
Brian Riggin, Equinox Properties.
Excellent, thank you, Brian. All right, Erin, do you want to do the first one? The Japanese Language School, it's item number 11.
Thank you. So, um, Dan, Pierce, we're not, oh, there we go. So just a reminder, I won't go through and read all of these, but these are the designation standards that the landmarks board considers and you'll see that we refer to them for each of these three landmarks. Um, and in addition to meeting one of the standards, the object site or improvement building must possess the integrity or ability to convey the significance. So we're going to start with the Japanese Language School located at 1414 South Weller Street. This was designated by the board October 4th of 2006 and the nomination had been submitted on behalf of the Nikkei Heritage Association of Washington.
I'm sorry, Erin, could you say who submitted that?
The Nikkei Heritage Association of Washington.
Thank you.
And they are still the owners of the building today. So, um, the designation standards identified for the board were A and C and the, and the designated features included a portion of the site and the exteriors of buildings one, two and three. And, um, you can see the site outlined in red. So there is additional lots that are owned by the property owner, but they are not included in the landmark.
I love the 1935 photo that is attached and included here.
So, um, the school was built in phases from 1922 to 1929 and you can see the architects for each of the phases outlined there. The subject property is the oldest operating Japanese language school in the continental United States. The original facility was expanded in three phases in response to a steady increase in their people, uh, number of pupils and was planned for an additional eight classroom addition, uh, just to the west of the existing school, uh, in the early 1930s, but as a result of the national financial crisis, those plans went on hold. Um, in February 1944, excuse me, the federal government forcibly removed U.S. citizens of Japanese ancestry and residents of Japan living in West Coast states from their homes and communities and were incarcerated until 1945. During this period, the U.S. military seized this property and used it for training of Air Force members. Following the end of the war, many people from the local community were able to, uh, return to Seattle, but as a result of the circumstances, um, many had lived in these school buildings, um, from 1945 to 1957 until they were able to, um, either return to their homes or find other accommodations. So, um, starting in the late 1940s, community members created a social service organization with the goal of supporting Japanese and Japanese Americans in Seattle. Their work evolved into the eventual repair of the buildings and reinstatement of the Japanese language school. Over the decades, this work has continued to grow alongside the Seattle Japanese Community Service and overcoming many obstacles, the campus of buildings has continued to be renovated and improved to include a museum and many educational programs to support the mission of the Japanese Cultural and Community Center of Washington. Karen is here to represent them. If you have any questions.
Thank you very much.
This is, by the way, an excellent report and it's so touching with, I appreciate the historical flavor you brought to this, but also we can never forget what we did to the Japanese population in this country.
And I've just skimmed the surface, so I'm hoping Karen can offer some additional comments.
Please go ahead.
Well, I tried to, um, boil things down because I didn't want to take too long and so with only a couple of minutes.
I just want you to know, thank you for that. We have a giant agenda, so I don't want you to think you're being pressed, but thank you for moving on.
No, I will be brief. Yep. Four generations ago, immigrants established the Seattle Japanese Language School. It was intended as a vehicle for transmission of the language and cultural values. But equally important was the role in fostering the growth of the community. Today, we're beneficiaries of those aspirations with a small staff, dozens of volunteers and hundreds of supporters. And no matter what role we all play, we are custodians of that legacy. We operate a community center today where Japanese language and cultural values remain at our core. But given our history and the history of Japanese in America, we also embrace our civic and moral obligation to contribute towards the betterment of this community, which is what continues to guide our efforts today. I think that that's the important point that we wanted to make is that as a place, um, we have the brick and mortar, but the importance and significance of the Japanese language school is all of the people who have been involved, not only through the decades and through the generations, but the people who come together today to offer what we've learned through history and through building a community to then giving back to that same community. And so today I'm here to thank you for the support and recognizing the historic significance of the Japanese language school, but also to thank you for your continued support that we receive through the city of Seattle.
Great, thank you. Do you have any questions, Council President Harold?
Well, no questions relative to, this is just an outstanding opportunity. Thank you for all the work. Um, the, the history is just, just sort of blown away by it. I mean, many of, much of which I've heard over the years, but not seeing it written for him, so it's just my pleasure to support this.
Right, thank you. And do you have any other comments that you would like to add on this, Erin? I know that the controls are going to be, I think on, you said A and C?
Yeah, yes.
So it's the location.
And it's the portion of the site and the exteriors of the buildings. So they have a lot of flexibility for renovation.
And the aspect of the cultural and economic heritage of the site.
Cultural heritage, I think, and also, um, the national significance, if not the local significance as well, of the events that are related to the history of these buildings.
Thank you for that. Um, and since it's clear that we're going to support this, I would like to move Council Bill 119418, which is imposing controls, the historical preservation and landmark status on the Japanese language school.
Second, and after we pass this, you want to say one other thing?
Okay, good. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
None opposed, no abstentions, please go ahead.
This, uh, I've seen a lot of write-ups over the years. This is, in my opinion, just one of the better write-ups. Uh, the history is just, I just like it so much. Is there any way to, uh, is there, after it's written up and we pass the legislation, it seemed like we should, uh, uh, put this somewhere. Do something with it laminated or do something on some walls or something, so I.
We'd be happy to share what we have. Catherine Kraft is, and, uh, I think she was the main author who was engaged by the property owners to do this in 2006.
Yeah, this is good.
Yeah, well, let her know that we really appreciate it. And I think what Council President Harold is saying is that we would really like, uh, to elevate this so that it's not.
Absolutely. It's on, it's on our website, but we'd love to have other opportunities to share.
Reese like a novel, so maybe we get a little creative with this one. Of course, I'll get ding for showing favoritism, but oh, what the heck. It's just a good write-up and it's a rich history that, um, needs to be told even more. It's probably personal to me too, because of my mother's.
And we thank the owners for doing that because they.
Yeah.
They're the ones that brought her to the table.
All right, well, thank you. So this has been moved and approved and voted on, so, um, Dan, will you read, uh, item number 12?
Yes, Council Bill 119414, a short title and ordinance relating to historic preservation and imposing controls upon the University of Washington, Washington Canoe House, ASW, ASUW Shell House, landmark designated by the Landmarks Preservation Board.
Very good, thank you so much. And Karen, I mean Erin and Julie, love to hear more about this.
Okay, so, um, most people, uh, refer to this as the canoe house today, but it was formerly the US ASUW Shell House. Um, it's located at 3655 Walla Walla Road Northeast on the campus, designated by the Landmarks Board, April 18th of this year, under standards A, B, C, D and F. Uh, the features include a portion of the site, the building exterior and the interior building volume and the roof truss work. Building was completed in 1918, um, designed by Ellie Gregory of the U.S. Navy. And that's kind of an interesting footnote, many people did not know, the subject building was constructed by the Navy as a seaplane hangar, um, as this portion of this campus was donated, um, to the armed services to be used as a training camp for World War I. And, um, we have photographic evidence of seaplanes being stored in the building, but its use for training was very short-lived because of the armistice, the armistice was signed, uh, November 11th of the same year. So we are at the 100-year anniversary for both the building, um, as we are for the conclusion of the First World War. Uh, the university purchased the building from the Navy and converted it into a facility for the men's rowing team who occupied it from 1919 to 1949. And I think you all know what I'm going to say next. The Husky crew team that won Olympic gold in 1936 were trained here.
Oh, we were going to get into Boys in the Boat, but go ahead.
Yeah, Dan Brown's Boys in the Boat, yep. So, uh, the subject building also housed the workshop of master boat builder George Pocock, who built racing shells for the UW and for others. His Husky Clipper was the, was custom-built here for the men's eight that rode to victory in Berlin. Mr. Pocock and his craftsmen also manufactured parts of the Boeing B-17 Flying Fortress in the same shop during World War II. Uh, following the war and the growing, um, the growth of the rowing program at UW, the university built Connebeere, uh, which has since been expanded and renovated and relocated the program there. And that's when it continued to be used for, um, boat rental and intermural boat storage and became known to most of us as the canoe house.
Great, thank you. Julie, would you like to add to this?
I think that's a really good description that Erin provided. I wondered if you had any questions for us.
Well, the only question I have is how are we going to get Boys in the Boat filmed in Seattle and on the UW campus? Because I understand the Lantern has assumed control of the Lantern Films from Weinstein and as well they should. Uh, it's got to be filmed here. We can't let it go to British Columbia, even though we love British Columbia.
We will be as amenable as possible to get them here.
Right. Um, thank you. I don't have any particular questions. Clearly this is a notable feature. I'm delighted that it's going to have the landmark status. Uh, Council President Harold, do you have anything?
No.
Mr. Husky Football, have anything to add?
No questions.
Okay, well then I'm going to move Council Bill 119414, which will impose these controls on the canoe house and designating it as a landmark. So.
Second.
Thank you. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
None opposed, no abstentions, we're good. So, please, Brian. Erin.
Okay.
May I?
Sorry, Dan has to read this in.
Not a problem. Uh, Council Bill 119422, an ordinance, short title and ordinance relating to historic preservation and imposing controls upon the Idris Nurses' Home, a landmark designated by the Landmarks Preservation Board.
Very good. All right, kick this one off, Erin.
Okay, I'll give a, another, uh, brief overview of the history. Each one of these has a very layered history, but we do our best to just kind of cover little highlights. Um, this is the Francis Skinner Idris Nurses' Home in Queen Anne, located at 2120 First Avenue North. Um, this was designated by the Landmarks Board, May 16th of this year, under standards C and D. The features include the building exterior and a portion of the site. Uh, this was completed in 1923 and is the work of A.H. Albertson. The Nurses' Home was designed, as I say, by Abraham Horus Albertson, who is notable architect in Seattle. Uh, the building exterior remains highly intact, although it's not covered in all of the ivy anymore, and exhibits an eclectic style with a mix of colonial and mission revival features. Perhaps more importantly, uh, that's cultural history. The building was originally the Orthopedic Children's Hospital founded in 1907 by Anna Herclis, the institution that we know today as Seattle Children's Hospital. In the years following the death of Mrs. Clis's young son in 1898, she visited facilities around the nation to see the type of health care that was being provided for children and wanted to work to establish the first facility of its kind in Seattle, which she was successful in doing. Uh, this became, began under the premise that all children were welcome for care regardless of inability to pay. The hospital's first building was the 1908 Fresh Air House. It was located on the same city block in the southwest portion. In 1911, they constructed a larger three-story facility on the east half of the block, uh, which remains there today. It was expanded a decade later and, uh, we know that today as Queen Anne Manor, um, formerly the hospital. And in that same phase of, uh, the second phase of expansion for the hospital, the Idris Nurses' Home was completed on the west side of the property outlined in red and served as a residence for the children's hospital nursing staff that lived on the campus. Uh, it is dedicated to one of the hospital trustees, Francis Skinner Idris. She, both she and her mother served on the board and she had died shortly after giving birth to her own daughter. And so she's, uh, remembered here.
Huh, wow. Um, well, Brian, welcome to the table. So, uh, we're glad to have you. Do you want to tell us a little bit about your interest in this?
Well, um, yeah, I, I bought the property and it, it comes with a parking lot to the south of it, which I'm interested in developing, um, into a seadoo apartment building. Um, but the subject building itself is, is very cool. I live and work on Queen Anne, so it's, 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 uh, pretty neat to have these old buildings like this preserved. Um, and it's, it's an interesting building in a lot of ways. Like it's all concrete, for one thing, built in 1923. The, the walls, the floors, even the roof is made out of reinforced concrete. So that's, that's unusual by itself, but also the exterior is in almost the same condition as when it was built in 1923. So it's, it's maintained really well, even though in that picture it's covered with ivy, but, um, and so it's a great building to have on Queen Anne preserved. Uh, you know, there's, there's a few others on Queen Anne that are that old that, that are also being preserved, which is great too, but, um, and, and the history, uh, you know, like Erin was saying, is kind of multi-layered. I mean, the fact that the Children's Orthopedic Hospital was all women organization, this is kind of a women's history thing too. Um, and it still is today, I believe, the board of directors is all women. And this building was built for an all-women nursing staff that, that helped run the Children's Orthopedic Hospital. So that's, that's another layer of its history. And the architect was a famous architect as well, A.H. Albertson, who also designed the downtown YMCA and the Cornish School of Arts. So it's, uh, also it's believed that the building is haunted, but that's not on the record, the historical landmark record.
Kind of makes it more interesting, don't you think?
Yeah. So I'm keeping it, you know, as it is, which is currently an office building for the American Cancer Society. And, um, they've been using it since the seventies for that and so I'm just going to keep it as, as an office building.
Great, well, thank you very much for doing that. Um, any further questions?
No.
All right, well, I'm, not to, to rush this, but I think that it's really clear, this is a very good opportunity. Thank you for being willing to preserve it. And I'm not sure what you said, a seadoo apartment next door?
Uh, yes, small efficiency dwelling unit.
Oh, nice, great, super.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, I'm going to move Council Bill 119422, which will impose controls on the Nurses' Home.
Second.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, nice. Great. Super. Okay, so I'm going to move Council Bill 119422, which will impose controls on the Nurse's Home.
Second.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed? No abstentions? This passes. Thank you very much. This will all come in front of our full council on Monday. I have every reason to believe that it'll go forward. Thank you all. Thanks for coming.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks to the UW. Thank you for the work you're doing on Queen Anne, and thank you so much for the Japanese Language School. Okay, the next item of business we have is our Seattle Animal Shelter. Would you like to read that in? And I'm going to ask Jeff Sims and Ann Graves, Cara Mainhester, to come up to the table.
Yes, we have Council Bill 119429, a short title and ordinance relating to the fees charged by the Seattle Animal Shelter.
Right. Thank you. Jeff, are you, are you on this by yourself? All right. Small but mighty team. Let's go. Item number 14 in our notebooks.
So these are technical. Is that working out? There we go. So this ordinance makes a few technical changes to a bill that was passed as part of the budget. Three in particular. They all address basically technical details and changes that were made, either with a fee charge being rounded correctly or other minor details like that. Do you want me to go through particular details?
I think high level, just tell us what we, what we need and what we missed.
Overall, so it's correcting how one of the fees is rounded. The second one is also correcting, making sure that we have consistency in how discounts are calculated for seniors and individuals with disabilities. And then also updating a late fee that was overlooked, actually, about two times ago. Overall, these changes will probably result in about $11,000 in additional revenue for the shelter.
I'm sorry, say that number again?
$11,000.
Oh, okay. All right. It's not a major number, but an important one for the animal shelter. Council President Harold, do you have any additional thoughts on this?
No.
Okay, I don't either, so I'm going to move Council Bill 119429 relating to these fees charged by the animal shelter.
Second.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. None opposed? No abstentions? Thank you for your hard work. And I appreciate the briefing that you gave me and your team members gave me earlier this week. So I feel comfortable we're moving forward in the right direction.
Okay.
Great. I think that's it.
I don't know if I should stay up here then, or I guess I'll let...
Please do, because the next one's the Annual Action Plan. So would you...
Not just me, though.
Like to read this one in? Oh, thank you very much. Before we dive into the Annual Action Plan, we do have a public hearing. So have, do we have anyone who has signed up? I'm going to open this public hearing as soon as I find out if anybody has signed up. Okay. No one signed up. Anybody in the audience like to speak to this? All right. Consider this public hearing opened and closed, and we have some of our favorite folks from Human Services here. And if you would like to address this. Jeff, do you want to open it first?
Just given how packed the agenda is, I'll just defer to that.
Okay, great. Hi, Audrey.
Hi.
Nice to see you both.
Hi.
And if you'll just say your names for the record.
Yes, I'm Audrey Buring, Deputy Director of the Human Services Department.
And I'm Deborah Reinhardt, Strategic Advisor for the Federal Grants Management Unit.
Excellent. Please. So what do we need to know today?
So, we're here today to brief you on the draft 2019 Annual Action Plan. This is essentially the plan that lays out the activities that we propose we're going to use our federal grants for. And so those, did this go off?
No, it just, all of a sudden, it was getting really echoey, so thank you.
Yeah, oh, good. So, the federal grants include CDBG, Community Development Block Grant, our Home Investment Partnerships Program, HOME, housing opportunities for people living with AIDS, which is HOPWA, and Emergency Solutions Grant, which is called ESG, Federal Funds. This is a requirement from the Housing and Urban Development Agency each year for us to receive this grant. So earlier this year, council adopted the five-year consolidated plan for 2018 to 2022. And this plan that we're talking about today represents the second year of the federal grant allocation covered by that consolidated plan. So today, we're going to talk about the, what we call the proposed activities for prior federal award expenditures. That means HUD hasn't yet notified of us of our actual award amount for 2019, but we have work that needs to begin before the notification. As a reminder, the city adopted estimates of federal grant revenues as part of the overall budget process in November.
And that was 17 million plus, right?
I think that's right.
So this is additional 18 for 29, 18 million for 2019?
These are the proposed revenues that we're basing on the award prospects that were adopted in the city budget, but we don't have HUD's final award allocations yet.
So HSD is going to come back to the committee when the federal budget is complete, and they notify us of the actual award amount in 2019. And at that time, we'll present a revised 2019 action plan and legislation that adopts the final report to be submitted to HUD and amends the adopted city budget as needed. So I'm going to turn it over to our resident expert, Deborah Reinhardt, from our Federal Grants Management Unit, to walk you through a few highlights of the action plan.
Okay, this is somewhat of an odd situation in that we would normally be coming to with legislation to actually adopt our draft 2019 Annual Action Plan. But because we're so late in the congressional budget approval, and because HUD has given us continued instructions not to submit our annual action plan until we have the final award allocation numbers from them, we are coming before the council to make sure that we proposed to you how we think we're going to spend this money, but we know we're going to have to come back and amend this when we get our actual award dollars. Right now, we're not expecting significant increases, and we're hopeful we're not looking at significant decreases. Congress has extended the continuing resolution for the federal budget through December 21st. We know that among this, the bills that are already being approved, it includes the Transportation HUD, T-HUD bill. So that's been negotiated, but it's not final and it's not approved. And the seventh bill that's awaiting approval is, of course, for the National Homeland Security Department, which involves the issue of building the wall. So everything's on hold, basically.
Do we have any, I know we're all reading the newspapers and hearing what our favorite news channel is offering. Do you have any inside information we should know about?
We're tracking with the National Community Development Association as closely as possible, and I forward that information on to my leadership. And that's where I'm getting this read from, is that the anticipation is that there's strong support for Community Development Block Grant in particular. The home funding is deemed sort of moving forward and progressing, and the housing development and housing affordability is such a huge issue back home for most of the representatives, that that's not as likely to be significantly changed. It's all a matter of getting the packages out of Congress in some kind of timely way. And then, of course, HUD has to take it, apply the allocations formula grants process, prospect, which then tells entitlements, how much money are you getting for each of your four pots when you get it? So we're a ways down the road from knowing what our actual dollars will be. However, it's still important, it's critical for us to come before the committee and have this public hearing held, because in order for us to start expenditures that would eventually become eligible for CDBG or the other federal grant funding, we have to have presented to the public, this is how we're thinking about spending the money. And to that end, when we get our funding, we anticipate spending it for our current priorities that were reflected in the consolidated, five-year consolidated plan. And they basically go to homeless prevention and services, developing and retaining affordable housing, help for low and moderate income people for home repairs, and economic development for businesses, job training, and parks improvements. And these are all done with our partners at Seattle Housing Authority, the Office of Economic Development, the Office of Housing, the Office of Planning and Community Development, parks, and, more recently, the Office of Refugee and Immigrant Assistance, Immigrant and Refugee Assistance, and of course, a lot of community-based providers. So the details of the proposed allocations by department were included in your briefing memo as an attached table. We'll be coming back. And so, assuming we don't get a drastic increase or a drastic decrease, the numbers that you see as they were adopted as part of the city budget process probably won't change very much.
When do you expect to come back, Deborah?
Well, that would be the $64,000 question. We are hopeful that Congress will choose not to keep adding on continuing resolutions, and that at least the federal budget process will come to a conclusion shortly in January. Then it generally takes three to four months for the rest of the process to continue through. So we're hopeful maybe we'll be getting signals by the end of the first quarter.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Audrey, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Nothing to add.
Okay. Jeff? Council President Harold?
Nope.
All right. And welcome, Councilmember Muscata. Thank you very much. Well, we have no vote on this today. This is just a briefing. Thank you, and I know that we'll see you again, hopefully soon. I appreciate very much what you've done, Audrey, and your department in helping us understand how these investments will be made and how much revenues we can expect.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming. All right. Item number 16, would you like to read this in, Dan?
Yes. Council Bill 119421, a short title and ordinance relating to employment, commonly referred to as the Fourth Quarter 2018 Employment Ordinance.
Very good. Thank you. And our, I think our Human Resource Department ACES are here. Patricia, you're taking over for Council Central Staff. Thank you for being here. Jeff, thank you for your help. Excellent. Good to see you. And Sarah, if, once everybody's settled, if you'll start introductions, please.
Sure. Sarah Butler, SDHR, Policy and Legislation Advisor.
Hello, Brent Meyer, Senior Analyst, Compensation Classification, SDHR.
Lisa Gardner, Compensation Program Manager.
Nice. And welcome to the city, Lisa.
Thank you.
Patricia, would you like to kick it off?
Certainly. So the city council must approve any position that is changed from a civil service to a non-civil service position, and I believe that's the first item. And they also must approve any changes in benefits.
Great. Thank you. Sarah, do you want to, or would you like whoever is leading us through this?
Yeah, I'll lead you through Section 1, which designates nine positions as civil service exempt. Seven of those positions are filled, and two of those positions are vacant.
Are the two that are vacant, I think I asked you this already, are we out for applications, or what's the status of those?
Yeah. So actually, one position will be filled in the Office of Sustainability and Environment after this ordinance is passed and signed by the mayor. The other position actually was filled between the time that it was reviewed and this ordinance. So it actually is currently now a filled position.
Okay. So I know we talked about this yesterday, of what is filled. And as you pointed out, we've got four in SDHR, Human Resources. We've got the one Strategic Advisor and OED, Office of Economic Development, and then also Seattle IT filled?
Yeah. So all those positions are filled, as you explained.
Okay, very good. And the total dollar amount of the impacted, impact in 2018 is $32,000. Is that correct?
That is correct. $32,914, and those costs will be absorbed by the departments.
Okay. So what else do we need to know?
I'll just go forward to Section 2, is an update to SMC 4.13.010. And that's merely an update of the table in the code to show the redesignation of a Planning and Development Specialist II to Planning and Development Specialist Senior.
Okay. Any questions on this?
Nope.
Okay. I would like to move Council Bill 119... Got something else?
One more section.
Sure.
One more section of this ordinance?
All right. So the last section in the ordinance is amending Seattle Municipal Code on Computation of Sick Leave. This is tying up some loose ends around implementation of new sick leave laws that took place last year. What we have required by external laws is a sick leave accrual rate of .034 on hours worked. What the city provides to its employees is an accrual rate of .046 hours on all hours paid. For the most part, it meets or exceeds the requirements of the law, but there are some employees who work large amounts of overtime that need to be compensated additional sick leave, and this merely cleans that up.
And do we have an estimate on how much this is going to cost?
In the ballpark of $50,000 a year, citywide.
Okay. Patricia, what else do I need to know?
I think you're good.
Anything else that has slipped in the cracks here? Okay, then I would like to move Council Bill 119421.
Second.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? No. So this unanimously passes. Thank you for all your help. Thank you for coming and giving me a pre-briefing. It was very helpful. Thank you, Patricia. Okay, Dan, do you want to read Item 17? It's the one we've been waiting for.
Yes, this is Council Bill 119425, a short title and ordinance authorizing in 2018 acceptance of funding from non-city sources.
Very good. Oh, sure. Excuse me for one second. So we're spending a moment here.
Okay. I'll proceed. Let's just go ahead and proceed. Are the presenters for Item 17 here, is this you, Ben?
17 is...
Is acceptance of funds from non-city sources?
Yes.
Okay.
I think you've gone.
Okay. Did you, you already read it into the record?
I have.
Okay. So until the chair returns, go ahead and just tee it up.
Thank you. Thank you for filibustering.
Yeah, well...
So, we are going to be first accepting some funding. And would you like to read this in, if you haven't already?
Already read in.
Good, okay. Let them just move. Hi, Ben. Welcome.
Afternoon, councilmembers.
Please.
Hello, Eric Sun.
Very good. Thank you very much. Who's going to kick this off?
That would be me.
All right.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Council Bills 119425 and 119430, which are Items 17 and 18 on your agenda, together form the fourth supplemental budget package for 2018. And we'll go through the first, the grant ordinance first. That's 119425. This bill would authorize departmental acceptance of 45 grants totaling about $12 million, including one donation as well as one loan. Table 2, or Table 2 on Pages 2 and 3 of the staff memo that you have, and I have additional copies if that would help you, of the staff memo. If that's, sometimes paper is annoying. Table 2 on Pages 2 and 3 of the staff memo lists the grants and loans, over $100,000 in the proposed ordinance. Most of the others that were received are less than $50,000. You can find all 45 grants on Attachment 1 to the summary and fiscal note. And I have copies of that also, if you would like. Okay. I'm sorry, I know that's a lot of paper, so just holler if you want to see it.
I think we're good. The one question I had, we'll get to. So why don't you go ahead through your points, and then I'll ask about 1.37.
Okay. So I'm just going to highlight a couple of the items on Table 2 that are the bigger ticket items. So you'll see that there's a $950,000 donation from the Seattle Parks donation, or Seattle Parks Foundation, to support the Duamish Waterway Park improvements. There is a $25 million loan from the State Department of Ecology to move the design forward for the Ship Canal Water Quality Project. They're accepting the loan rather than having the city do the bonding, because we'll be able to save a little bit, a little bit in financing costs that way. There's expanded outreach. This is a smaller ticket item, but, but significant to the neighborhood. There's expanded outreach for multiple drainage projects in the South Park area, which has had ongoing flooding issues. And so, SPU is providing some additional staff person or some outreach people to be able to talk to the community. And you had asked Councilmember Bagshaw that we suggested SPU coordinate with the Department of Neighborhoods to make sure that there's sophisticated or enough expertise to be able to get the messages out to people with limited English. And so we've made that outreach.
Excellent. I know we talked about that during the budget. Thank you very much, because there are a lot of folks there that English is not their first language, and having Department of Neighborhoods help us with outreach makes a ton of sense. And so thank you in advance to Department of Neighborhoods and to SPU for coordinating.
The next couple of items are basically the grants to Seattle Fire and Seattle Police. The Seattle Fire Department grants are basically new funding cycles from existing grant sources. So you'll see a Port Security Grant and several FEMA-funded grants. Seattle Fire is also getting reimbursed by Sound Transit for some code compliance existence or assistance on the North Link work that they're doing. There is $5.8 million going to Seattle Police Department. Again, these are a lot of ongoing funding cycles. There is a new grant in here that you'll see for comprehensive opioid, I cannot say this word, opioid abuse site-based program. And there's also a small grant, but to the Immigrations and Customs Enforcement Task Force. It's basically Department of Justice money, but it's passed through ICE. We do have Greg Doss here to answer more specific questions, if you have them, about the SPD grants.
Great. That is the one that I'm interested in. So Greg, if you can talk about it. This is on our Page 3 of the staff memo, and it's at the bottom, 1.37. There is a lot of concern, and rightly so, about ICE, and we would not want to be accepting money from ICE if it comes with handcuffs. So if you could talk a little bit about that.
Yeah. Thank you, Councilmember Greg Doss, Council Central Staff. As Lisa mentioned, the grant from ICE is a pass-through grant, and more a function of organization of the federal government rather than any kind of nexus with immigration. The Department of Homeland Security houses ICE, and then within that is HSI Border Security. And that's where we get the funding for this program, HSI Border Security. And so, the mission of that organization is to combat emerging and existing transnational criminal... transnational criminal organizations. And so, this is really about international border-crossing crime. And an example was, let's see, in March of this year, there was 315 pounds of methamphetamines that was confiscated during a bust that was on its way to Canada. And so, this is the activity that the police department participates in. Again, no nexus at all to immigration.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that, Greg. Please continue.
That pretty much completes my briefing on the grant ordinance, and we'd be happy to answer specific questions if you want, or we could move forward.
I think if there, is there anything else in this item for us before we vote on it? Anything else we need to know?
We have no further comments on that.
Okay, well then I'm going to move Council Bill 119425, which authorizes the acceptance of funding. Did you have a question? I apologize.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say thank you for calling attention to this item, 1.37. I am still concerned, given the administration and their miscategorization of immigrants and refugees crossing borders, and the tie that they continue to make with this being somehow linked to other illegal activities such as drug crossing of our borders. So, I remain very concerned about them and their intentions.
What would you like to see Councilmember Miskata, either in terms of ongoing information, or what would, what would help?
One of the issues that I would suggest is better understanding from the feds about how this will be fire-walled off from any of the work that they currently do with ICE detention, deportations, et cetera. I know that we are in the midst of trying to figure out better ways to protect our community overall. For me, I'm just going to be abstaining from voting on this item for you, but just wanted to continue to flag that even though I think we have reason to believe that this is not connected to any immigration and refugee assistance, that just the way that this administration categorizes their, the movement of people, continues to be of concern for me.
Council President Harold, anything else?
No, I have to rely on the diligence we did. I respect your position. I'll vote affirmatively, but be prepared to help us deal with questions on this 90,000-plus.
Sure, and the last thing I can tell you is that this is a reimbursement. So this is for activities that the police department have already spent on this task force. So I'll get more detailed information of the exact things they've done.
Good, I'd appreciate that as well. And then also, I mean, Councilmember Miskata's point is one that I share, which is, I want to make sure that there's not some, you know, some fine print there that we're going to be struggling with, or that the federal government says, well, you accepted our $90,000. Now we expect you to do X.
Absolutely, and I did ask that question of the department, whether or not there were any ties to policies around immigration that would be obligated to comply with, and the answer is no. But I'll, again, get you more information on that.
Good, just continue to monitor it, will you? Ben, do you have something?
I just want to emphasize that the mayor shares the exact concerns that you're describing. And the key issue here is, what does SPD do in coordination with these agencies? And that's in our control, what it is we choose to let SPD do. And amongst things, in response to entirely appropriate questions provided, policies that you're aware of at SPD that precludes officers from engaging in any activities in terms of asking questions about immigration status and the like. So, we're, the mayor, again, and the executive is very concerned about the same. At the same time, there is, you know, per the examples that were cited, drug issues, human trafficking issues there, you know, as a city with a significant port near an international border, you know, we are potentially a site for these kinds, well, we are in reality a site for these sorts of activities. So, can't hide from that either. But again, the concerns are entirely appropriate, and we would be happy to provide the information that we can.
Thank you. Well, I had no doubt that the mayor and all of you on the team share our concerns. So if you'll just keep us informed as this goes, if there's any, if you have a sniff of anything that makes us worried, let's, let's address it as fast as we can. Okay, so I've already moved it?
A second.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for, again, Lisa and Eric walking me through this.
Good write-up by Lisa and Steph. Thanks for laying it out neatly.
Very good. Okay, so let's move on to Item 18.
Yes, Item 18, Council Bill 119430, short title in ordinance, amending ordinance 125493, which amended the 2018 budget ordinance 125475, including the 2018-2023 capital improvement program.
Great, well, Ben Noble and Eric Sun and Lisa Kay, thanks for being here. So who's kicking this one off?
That will be me again, Madam Chair. Lisa Kay, Central Staff. So, this Council Bill 119430 is the supplemental budget ordinance. It proposes adjustments to the 2018 adopted budget, including expenditure authority to use the grants that we just discussed. The bill before you today is a corrected version of the original transmittal. The revisions add position authority for two new positions, an Assistant City Attorney funded by the Office of Housing and a Strategic Advisor for the Office of Police Accountability. I'll cover those in a little bit more detail later on. The revised version also corrects an error in the pension costs relative to the new SPAG contract. And again, we'll go over that in some more detail in a few minutes. Because this legislation increases the 2018 budget, state law will require final approval by three-quarters of the council. This is typical of most of the supplemental budgets. So just a heads-up that when it comes to council on Monday, it'll require three-quarters approval.
And so, we already know that three of our colleagues are out, one on medical leave, and two others are excused. So, do we need to do anything special today to approve having a voice vote on Monday?
I believe that action would be done with a suspension of the rules Monday morning.
Okay, very good.
So Table 1 on Page 1 of the staff report that you have shows that the fourth-quarter supplemental budget appropriations for operations, inclusive of all funds, grants, and transfers, would total approximately $85.5 million, $18 million of which draws from the general fund. The proposed legislation would also increase capital appropriations by about $17.6 million. Looking just at how much of this is general fund, if you would take out the grant and revenue-backed appropriations and any transfers, the legislation is authorizing operating appropriations of about $6 million from the general fund. If you look at Table 3 on Pages 4 and 5 of the staff memo, you'll see the list of the new operations appropriations that are not backed by new revenue sources. And for ease of your review, we've divided this table into three categories: ongoing programs, human resources and personnel, and operations, maintenance, and equipment. Looking at the first section, which is ongoing programs, you'll see that the two largest appropriations are for a technical correction to the Seattle Public Library, about $5 million, and reimbursement to King County for streetcar operations consistent with our agreement with King County for about $1.4 million. Moving on to the next section, which is the human resources or personnel purposes. These are some big-ticket items, but we didn't see any major policy issues here. There are three items totaling $6.6 million for the Seattle Employee Retirement System. Much of this is associated with implementing the new computer system, the pension administrative, the administration project. There's also $13 million for healthcare fund increases. That's reflecting claims that came in higher than anticipated. But there are, the executive has told us that there are quite sufficient reserves to cover this, and that this isn't cause for alarm. There's also $7.46 million in retroactive police pension fund contributions. And Greg is here, again, to go into more detail if need be, but I can provide you a 30,000-foot explanation for that, that the council appropriated a $3.86 million increase in general fund pension costs when you approved the SPAG contract, but the appropriation language wasn't structured correctly. So, one of these amendments would fix that. Then additionally, the $3.6 million in the supplemental reflects new appropriation of pension fund balance that wasn't included in the SPAG ordinance.
Just a little bit of context, if I might. The pension costs on the police side were fully anticipated as part of our negotiating process with the Police Officers Guild. So, we have the reserves to cover these, and again, they were anticipated. Similarly, the retirement costs, the retirement system, systems, computer system for which there are appropriations, those costs were anticipated. We didn't know what the exact bill was going to be or exactly when the timing was going to hit. But the project has actually come in slightly under our budget, not meaningfully, but again, not a surprise there. The healthcare number obviously stands out, but it's important to understand that we self-insure for healthcare, and that annual bills in the neighborhood of $250 million. $13 million is certainly large, and roughly 5%. So we've had a slightly more expensive year than we had anticipated. But again, it actually only takes a few large claims just from individuals or their family members to shift those costs one way or the other. As a result of knowing that there is some significant variance in those costs, we do have built-in reserves and financial policies. So we have, again, the reserves to cover these costs. And then we fully anticipate rebuilding those reserves over the next few years as part of the internal rate process, so.
So, I think, you and I have had a conversation about this, Ben. Who is in charge within the executive branch to see if we are reducing our healthcare costs? I know the county has been doing something for the last decade and a half. I'm sure we are, but I just don't know who's responsible for that.
That one I'm happy to answer, because it's a partnership between the Budget Office and Human Resources. And actually, I have a team of folks who've been working, Katie Ewing, it doesn't matter, names, Joe Russell as well, who've been spending a lot of time on this issue. And we help manage those costs with the unions, because we share through premium share and the like. We share the impact of those costs. So, they're looking at rolling out some new ways to try to help manage costs, particularly for individuals who are suffering extended and potentially expensive episodes of illness. Essentially, a targeted program where they would have a resource and an advocate to help them through the process. There's some evidence, there's good evidence other places that those kinds of sort of advocate assistance can help reduce costs by helping to better coordinate them. So that's something we're looking at rolling out relatively soon.
And I'm also really interested on prevention programs. Many other organizations, I think, I look at King County, and you know, they have this opportunity for individual employees to sign up as gold, silver, bronze, and there is certain commitments that they make, you know, whether it's stopping smoking or reducing, joining Weight Watchers or joining the gym, or whatever it is. But it's turned out, at least from my understanding, is that it has had positive documentable impacts, and that they've been able to reduce costs through early prevention.
I don't know the details, but I know that the recommendations have come forward around this kind of other mechanism I've described, were a result of a thorough analysis of a variety of tools. I don't know whether, specifically, whether that was among them. But as this comes forward, I think we'll have the opportunity to talk about the range of options and what we're hoping to implement here.
Great, so maybe you could just tuck that into a work plan sometime in first quarter to come back and talk to me about what we're doing and what the options are, and whether we can actually improve health outcomes and reduce costs. So what else do we have?
Just the last category on this table, 3, is operations and maintenance and equipment changes. And the largest costs there are basically departmental computer purchases and telephone costs. That's basically money that the departments reimburse Seattle IT for, and so it's, it's just basic operations costs.
Okay. Colleagues, do you have specific questions about this base legislation?
And just first, just to help sort of explain some budgeting stuff here, on the computer side, this is not actually new money. The departments have this money. They are now going to give it to IT to go to use, to go buy computers. So as a result, in the rules of the game, IT needs the budget authority. So they could get the cash from the departments. If they don't have the actual authority from you to spend the money, they cannot. So this, again, it's not new money to the city that we're looking at. It's rather the departments. They have these resources. They've been managing towards them so that they could have resources, not surprisingly, towards the year-end to try to make those kinds of equipment purchases. And then they, then we need to get IT[1435.48] And then we need to get IT the authority to actually spend their money.
Okay. And what is our total number when we add all of this up? The one supplemental ordinance summary doesn't have a total at the bottom line.
So on page one of the staff memo there, you'll see that the total operating budget appropriate, so the appropriation increases that weren't backed by new revenue are about $39.7 million.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I will just cover a couple more of the tables.
Please do.
And I believe we have three amendments for your consideration today. So the table four will show the capital appropriations that are put forward in the supplemental, and they total about $17.6 million. The bill would create two new CIP projects, the Duhamis-Waterway Park improvements, and City Light Demand Side Management Program, which is a key priority in implementing Seattle City Light Strategic Plan. The bill will also appropriate money for the previously described grant projects and reopen eight SPU projects to help them deal with closeout spending accounting issues.
Okay. So we've got their best management practice program, and a combined sewer overflow storage, Genesee, Thornton Creek, Mercer Corridor.
Yes.
Reservoir covering. I'm just making sure that we've...
Yes, West Seattle Reservoir Seismic and Morse Lake Pump Plant.
Pump Plant, good.
I would call your attention on table four, that one of the items for the capital appropriations was a request for $3 million from Finance and Administrative Services for tenant improvements. They went back and scrubbed that number and noted that they're closer to the range of $2 million. So I believe you have an amendment that we'll discuss in a few minutes to reduce that appropriation to $2 million.
Okay. And I think, do you want to talk a little bit more about that? Or did you have some, before we get into the amendment, do you have other things that you want to discuss here?
I don't think, I think the, well, we can, I was going to just go through the whole thing and then talk about the amendments, the three amendments. I'm about two minutes away.
No, that's good.
Maybe one minute away.
Just real quick, before you amend, this expenditure to FAS is a lot like the IT one that we just described. This is, again, departments who have some resource, and they're typically looking to do minor remodel-type stuff, so add a door, add an office, pick up some cubicles, whatever it might be, some space improvement kinds of things. And they have the resources within their own budget. FAS is actually going to be the one who executes the work, so they then need the budget authority to potentially spend other departments' money. So it's not an increase in total resources of the city, but rather, given the appropriate department, the authority to spend the money.
Great. Jeff, you've joined the table.
This is just my area. I was anticipating some questions there.
Okay.
Ben really covered a lot of it already.
All right. Lisa, please continue.
Okay. I'll just move on from the capital appropriations, then. As with other supplemental bills that you've seen, there are a number of transfers that don't increase appropriation authority, but are basically transfers within the same fund or between funds. I can go over those if you want to, or they're pretty much summarized in your staff memo, if that's...
So why don't you just briefly touch on them, and then we'll move on to the amendments?
Certainly. Within the transfers, there are seven appropriations transfers within the same fund, half a million dollars for Judgment and Claims Fund for unforeseen expenses. So those basically go from one line item to another. Two transfers are within Seattle IT to correctly align some project budgets. There was some remaining funds from the Rockefeller Grant that the Office of Sustainability had for $415,000. That's being transferred to the Mayor's Office of Policy and Innovation. And there are two transfers within SPD for that department's Immigrant and Families Institute and additional exam costs. And finally, there are transfers from Finance General to pay the departments for paid parental leave.
So these are all transfers within the same funds?
These are all within the same fund.
And so we're not scraping by for new revenues?
No, not increasing the bottom line at all.
Okay.
Two appropriations transfers between funds. One of them is a big-ticket item, but it's, and Eric may be able to speak more to this at this point, but it's a technical transfer, basically, of $29 million to make sure that we're using taxable bond proceeds for affordable housing.
And what is the implication of that?
Yeah, so the council authorized previously, and the city has been issuing bonds against a $29 million permitted amount to support the construction of affordable housing by other entities. And so that's just simply, it's not a permitted use for tax-free municipal bonds, and so the proceeds just need to be kept in a separate account in order to, so that the dollars don't mingle. That's all.
Okay. So this is essentially the $29 million that we dealt with two budget cycles ago?
That's correct.
Okay.
Finally, there are a number of net zero transfers within City Light, Seattle Public Utilities Water Fund, and within SDOT's Transportation Fund. So, and again, those don't increase the bottom line at all. The bill also would remove the budget proviso requiring a project accountability report on Seattle Police Department Records Management System. The executive finds, states that they have met the terms of that proviso, which central staff have confirmed.
Okay, good.
The bill also then creates the two new positions that I mentioned originally, with the new Assistant City Attorney that's funded by the Office of Housing. And that position would be advising on legislation and policy, including taxation and funding related to housing. And then there's a new strategic advisor, one civilian intake investigator, that would be added to the Office of Police Accountability. And that was authorized in the city's contract with the Police Officers Guild and funded in the budget.
So on the city attorney, the two-year position, it's in your 10.1 item, has that already been advertised, do you know?
I don't know. I would ask Ben if he has knowledge on that.
I'm not sure. I actually think it may be a position that already exists, and it's a question of the funding, but I need to confirm.
Yeah, I'd like to know, because this is a really critical position for us. I know we've been doing a lot of outside legal counsel review on this topic, so...
Yeah, the representation here is actually much more about just the housing deals themselves. So we've had someone who's been doing that work for a long time, and my understanding is that they'll be leaving the cities. This is what I recall, and I could have this wrong, and if I am, and potentially creating personnel ways, and I don't mean to, but my understanding is the person's been involved in this work for a long time, is leaving the city. And so it's a question of bringing in someone who has the expertise to do the housing financing transactions themselves, rather than the underlying land use issues.
Okay, all right. Very good. Thank you.
And certainly if Ben finds out otherwise, then that would override. But the materials that we received supporting this indicated that the position would be hired in, like, January. So I don't know if it's been listed yet, but I assume not yet.
You asked a much more direct question, so that's probably more current information than I. But in terms of the use of the position, I believe it's to support essentially implementing the housing, if you will.
Good. So do you want to continue at this point?
With your permission, I could move to the amendments, if you'd like.
Please do.
So the first amendment I mentioned to you previously is revising that appropriation authority for Finance and Administrative Services down from $3 million to $2 million for the requested tenant improvements. And that's being distributed to you now. That's Amendment One.
And would you just describe why we're doing that? I think what you told me yesterday was that you had asked for some specific information.
Yeah, we asked, so as, sorry, Jeff Sims, Council Central Staff, as Ben discussed earlier, this is actually appropriations that are already available in the capital budgets for a variety of projects. These are customer-related requested tenant improvements. FAS just needs the authority to spend that money. So as they delve, they initially developed an estimate, but then as they have proceeded with the work, they're able to get more refined estimates. Some are actually increases, some are actually decreases compared to what they had intended. And so when you aggregate all of that up with all of your ongoing updates, the number just changed.
Okay.
We actually do a true-up like this, both in the second quarter and the fourth quarter.
Okay. So any questions or comments on this? So we're going to vote on the amendment first. So I'm going to move to amend this Council Bill 119430, which will change that number from $3 million to $2 million.
And strike.
And it does. It strikes $6,500 and inserts $5,500.
Second.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
None opposed, and no abstentions. So that amendment to our council bill has passed. Okay, do you want to move on to amendment number two? And I believe I'd like to have Teresa Moscata talk to it after you present it.
Okay. Amendment number two would provide $50,000 in general fund support in 2018 and carried forward to the Human Services Department that year into 2019, to contract with a single agency to provide services to young children whose families are experiencing the effects of homelessness, agencies such as Wellspring Family Services. The contractee will provide an early learning center to assist children in developing social and emotional skills, self-esteem, independence, language and conflict resolution skills, and in becoming ready for school.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Moscata, would you like to discuss this and introduce it to us?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Chair. As many of you know, Wellspring offers critical services to those who are experiencing homelessness, those who are trying to exit homelessness, and they provide a wide array of services. What I'm asking for today is your generous support with allocating $50,000 to help keep the Wellspring Early Learning Center open for the remainder of 2019. This is just a portion of the amount that they may need. What Wellspring currently does is they have five classrooms that help provide services to those who are homeless. One of their classrooms is not yet filled, because they are still seeking additional dollars. We at the city have provided funding historically through the Family Support RFP for the year of 2018, and have provided funding through 2019. But unfortunately, funding for quarters two, three, and four were not included in our original proposal that we passed just last month. What this would mean, in having conversations with them, is that one of their classrooms would have to close after quarter one of this year. These are individuals whose parents are currently experiencing homelessness, and people who have just previously been homeless. So this is critical services that I think, if we are able to allocate an additional $50,000 to, will help make sure that the early learning kiddos between the ages of one and five continue to receive trauma-informed care in a trauma-informed environment, especially for the vulnerable population, so that they can gain social, emotional, and developmental skills. Part of what we will look into before the end of quarter one is additional information about what concerns or barriers may exist to them getting additional funding for quarters three and four next year. But this would definitely help them stay open through quarter two, if not a little bit longer.
Great. And thank you for bringing this to our attention. I've known Wellspring's and knew the executive director, not the current one, but the one before. And I've visited that site, and I know how dedicated they are to the children. But also, as you raised, this program is really helping families who either are currently homeless, or who have just experienced homelessness. I can't even imagine the trauma those little guys are experiencing. So I want to say thank you for bringing this forward. Can you just remind me, were you able to identify a funding source, or how did that work?
Yes.
Please do.
So I will start. First, I also wanted to mention, in addition to providing trauma-informed care, one of the issues that I know we care a lot about is access to health services. In addition to getting early learning support, they also get onsite family support specialists through weekly access to a pediatric nurse practitioner, and regular onsite dental care. Originally, we were looking at $100,000 for the remainder of 2019, and scaled back to $50,000 so that there would be additional funding available. Is there someone on central staff who can help me talk about where the funding source comes from for the $50,000? I know you've been working closely with our staff.
So this appropriation is a net increase in general fund expenditure authority, and so there's nothing to point to specifically within the corners of this sheet of paper as an offset. I know, I spoke briefly with Ben here, I don't wish to put him on the spot, I know he had some concerns about the net increase in expenditures. I would just note that, you know, this is something like, rather, this item and the next item, Amendment Three, put together would be something like 0.008% of the 2018 general fund appropriation. Now, that doesn't, it's $100,000, and that's, you know, real money. So I don't want to sound cavalier about this, but it is my expectation that over the whole of the $1.3-ish billion general fund budget, that the entirety of the appropriation that's been provided for this year will not, in fact, be used. Now, we just went through the process of adopting the 2019 budget, and you'll recall, like, a great deal of attention being paid, especially at the end, to relatively small amounts of money, and so it is a serious matter. We don't have an entire picture of the city's finances in the fourth quarter supplemental package. There are, I know CBO is very careful in the fourth quarter about trying to identify the available resources to back the things that they propose. But, you know, it's my hope that as Summit 9-2, the city's accounting system, which was re-implemented just for this year, as the kind of the teething troubles of that, you know, hopefully go into the rearview mirror, and as we are adopting a new budget system for both CBO and the council to use for next year, that we can look at some of the supplemental processes and get a framework where we can have greater precision and greater confidence on the part of all parties, executive and council, about exactly where we are, especially in the fourth quarter. But again, this is sort of, my expectation here is that $100,000 net increase could be offset by other non-use of funds that have been provided already.
So I'm very respectful of what you just said, Ben. I'm sure that this is one of those, like, oh, please, we just got through 2019, don't ask me to go scrape the bottom of the barrels again.
Let me just echo much of what Erica said. Obviously, the council just passed a balanced budget for 2019, and endorsed a balanced budget for 2020. You may or may not recall that the budgets for '19 and '20 are actually already assuming a significant underspend of resources in 2018, about $7 million, actually a little bit more than that because of SPD. That said, and to echo what Eric said, I cannot guarantee you that that forecast will be off by $100,000, but it is a conservative forecast, so not unreasonable to expect that there will be an additional $100,000. So I can't, just to be clear, I can't guarantee it. It's okay, sort of legally, for you to appropriate it, because if we try not to have the cash, then we might not be able to spend the money. So with that understanding, and we'll report back as soon as we get, we come here at the end of, usually in April, because the way the books close, it actually takes a little while to figure out how we ended the year, but we'll report back. And again, I would anticipate that we'll have the resource to cover this. If I had a concern, it's, and I think we'll understand this better, as, for instance, I'm the one that Councilmember Moscata described, to understand what the sustainability issues are, whether this is funding that's going to be needed over time, and also, and again, I'm not the policy expert in this space, but how it fits into overall strategies. And again, I'm certainly not suggesting we don't want to fund, support for homeless children as well as we can, but how it fits into overall strategies, previous RFPs and the like. But I think we will have the opportunity to do that over the course of next year.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Moscata?
Thank you so much for that. And I was remiss also in not touching a little bit on how this fits into our overall strategies. Three days ago, the headline in the Seattle Times said, "You Should Get on the Waiting List: Seattle's Childcare Crunch Takes a Toll on Parents and Providers. Demand for Childcare Has Reached New Heights Amid the Region's Booming Population and Rising Costs of Living." Given this population, the critical services they're providing to those who are homeless and just exiting homelessness, and the trauma-informed care that they specialize in, I took great caution in bringing this forward, because I know we have limited funding and potential downturn on the horizon. I'm hopeful that we will continue to be able to identify funding so that this is a sustainable program. Definitely believe it aligns with our values, and would gently encourage the committee's support.
Great. Thank you for that. And thanks to all of you, because I know where your hearts are. I mean, after we've just done the 2019 budget, nobody ever, at any point, ever said, "We're spending too much on early learning or on kids." That said, I respect the fact, Ben, that we may not have money in your top drawer that you could pull out today. But I would very much like to move forward with this, and then I'm going to talk about the companion one, which is Amendment Three. So I'd like to move to amend Council Bill 119430 as presented on Amendment Two.
Second.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? No abstentions? Thank you very much. So I'd like to talk about Amendment Three. Lisa, this is something that I also want to say, Council Central Staff, thank you once again for having to deal with last minute. But this morning, a number of my colleagues from the Prosecuting Attorney's Office, and our Human Services Department, and our Public Health Department were in my office, because the elder abuse multidisciplinary team that I have been supporting, and literally supporting for 15 years, came and said that the grant, the $500,000 grant that they were expecting from what's called VOCA, which is the Victims Criminal Act, I forget what the acronym stands for, but they thought they were going to get it, and they didn't. And what we know about elder abuse is that if the system's not coordinated, and if they don't have investigators, and if the county and the city aren't working together, very vulnerable seniors get not just left behind, but they are abused and they are neglected. And the horror about this is, is all countywide, there's only one case manager that is looking into all of this. And Paige Olria and Dan Satterberg have done a lot of work in this area, but we need to coordinate and really focus. It strikes me as like one of the tragedies of our community, that we feel like we can invest in children because they're vulnerable, and they're little, and they're cute, and we all want to support them. We need to see the same thing on the senior end, and taking care of our seniors is part of our age-friendly city. And I really want to support this group and be able to say, well, $50,000 isn't going to get you as far as $500,000, but if we can do a pilot that's successful, we think we can go back again next year and apply for that $500,000 grant. So I am also pleased, because the group that talked to me today is working hand-in-hand with our low acuity effort. So it's not new, it's really bolstering what we already have in place. So I'd like to entertain any questions my council colleague have on this.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to echo my support as well. I think along the continuum, along the age continuum, we have to really invest in those who are most vulnerable, and we see story after story of elder abuse. Thank you for being a champion on making sure that we're addressing it, and I'd love to support this amendment.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Council Central Staff, or Ben, I heard your lecture loud and clear. You may not have the money, and if you don't, we don't, but if we do, and we can help move this forward, it would be fabulous.
Understood.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for that. I'd like to move to amend Council Bill 119430 as presented on my amendment number three.
Second.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No abstentions? Thank you very much. So now we are going to be just voting on what we have amended, so I'd like to move to recommend Council Bill 119430, that we pass it as amended.
Second.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nobody in opposition, and no abstentions. So what else do we need to do, Lisa, today?
Nothing on this, ma'am chair. This will just go on to the council's agenda for Monday, action on Monday.
Okay. And Dan, do you have anything else that you would like to bring forward today?
Yes. Yes, thank you, Councilmember.
Please, go ahead.
Just wanted to say, happy anniversary to my parents, whose 33rd wedding anniversary is today, and I know that they're watching.
Thank you. Chris Ingersoll and Robert Strauss, congratulations. You've done well with the son of yours. Okay, well, I think, is that it? We have nothing else on the agenda today? Any points?
Nope.
Okay, for the good of the order, thank you all. Thank you, Council Central Staff. Ben and your team have been fabulous. Thank you all. This meeting's adjourned.